Guys must be racing around.
I wasn't driving at the time. The one who was driving is no longer with us.
Well, I mean, that would be, uh, would be cause.
Really?
I'm used to Main Street. Lately, I'm more than just living somewhere else.
I like it black and dark as night, and I like it.
We're Main Street, so you see them.
Don't wanna see them.
I have good neighbors.
I'm always there here, not in tune. There's a, you know, there's some around our neighborhood. I saw Bob or me.
You don't find it true.
That's not a bad sound.
No, no, it's actually.
What it has to do with the fabric?
Well, I think the text on itself.
Yeah, it's the bottom of the ears. Maybe. Cause the, uh. The one they're gonna do a new, uh, cover for my one. It's got a lot of, I kinda use one of them both, the covers, you know, needs to be, it's aged here, it needs to be changed, so. Started looking online and. Everywhere, like this, like the Sambrella fabric there, they're really good when they're. Supply shortages, so, and then. What I needed is more custom built, so I talked to a guy who does that, and he's like. Can't get, can't get a material. Yeah. Certain color and worse than others, but.
So you talked to a guy that does that?
No, I don't have.
That does that, yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, you can talk to a guy who does that. There are a couple. Who do that? I'm gonna leave it at that.
You mean you have choices?
Uh, but even like the, uh, the boat, the Vimini tops there, you can buy the Vimini tops there, and those two are shortage. If you go for the, uh, the really cheap fabric there, you can get that all day long, but if you wanna get the good stuff. Stuff that doesn't mold and stuff that will last waterproof.
Yep.
That's the fine.
We could ask for pills of salt or dirt. So we went to get some, and he said, Bert, come with me, so the cops come, you will be the one that all of you.
I did hear there, there were the top, a line of cars, and we almost needed a stop lane. It was therefore that the guy was trying to get salt on the shit, and there was people backed in there with their cars, like, come on, really?
Use common sense. I mean, when I went, the payloader was there, so I backed away far, and I waited till they were all done trying to get salt.
Is the company in your order? Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic for which stands one nation, one God, the liberty of the world, and the sovereignty of this land for all.
Open up the public participation, is there anybody that wants to address the board?
Well, we're here. Uh, I noticed a couple nights ago, I think last week, I see that it's got a pothole on the corner of Pembroke Gardens and Leavenham. And also, just wanted to mention something else, try to hopefully try to keep this town alive as much as we can.
Anything else, Paul?
Uh, no, that's it for right now.
Is there anybody else who wants to address the board? Does anybody else wants to address the board?
Yeah, it's birthday all of a sudden.
Okay. We'll move on to Article One. To consider other business adjustments to the agenda, further any, Gary?
Nope, clear on.
Right on. We'll move on to the Article Two, Consider Board Minutes for November sixteen and November thirty, twenty twenty-one. Make a motion to accept both, uh, both dates. Both dates. Second. We have a second. Are there any corrections or misses? That looks good to me. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries. Need a motion for the treasurer's warrants? They're all signed?
Yep.
You have a motion in there?
Yep, make a motion.
Motion second. By Chris, second. By Jason, approve the treasurer's warrants. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, it's a guess, motion carries. Article Four, To Consider the Twenty Twenty-One Olstok County Dispatch Service Contract.
Yeah, so this one's a little late. Uh, Olstok, um, sent that to us, brought that to our attention, um. A little over a month ago, so, um, we have budgeted, we are budgeted for this, it's just a little late ratification on, on the contract, which should be released on our fiscal year.
I make a motion to go ahead and accept the, uh, contract, I went ahead and read it before this. Second by Jay, uh, by, uh, Chris. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries. Article Five. To Consider Application for Abatement Property Taxes for Account Number Sixty-One.
So the narrative on this one is, there was, uh. The people who are buying, um. Had a homestead exemption, they, they bought, they sold the home in town, they bought another home in town. They didn't inform the town to transfer the homestead exemption from one property to the other, so the assessor, uh, not having that information. You know, remove the exemption off the property, and so, the person stated here they'd like to have back the exemption, uh, this year. So that would be considered an abatement, knowing that if you do approve that. We're not gonna get refunded from the state of Maine because we've already submitted our tax commitment, uh, and. The number of abatements, homestead, uh, excuse me, the number of homestead exemptions are in the MVR form, that's done. So, it is a responsibility of homeowners to notify, uh, the town when they, if they're gonna transfer, um, their property. Uh, it's, you know, it's. You know, I, I do feel bad, though, don't get me wrong, to lose that, the value of that is significant, uh, it's a big difference on your tax bill. Um, so. The assessors, uh, our assessor's opinion is that it's, you know, it's not up to him, he doesn't have the authority to approve this, um. Neither do I, uh, any only way it can be done is by abatement, so. Your call, uh, it's really not our responsibility to, uh, chase those down, we'd have no way of knowing. When a property transfers, we get that information later.
Right.
Right, and so. We, we did, uh, I guess I can. Related to this, if you wanna entertain a little bit of thought process here, uh, you know, Carol and Heather and I, and Natalie, we've been talking about. How can we better inform. Our, our taxpayers. Um, there's different ways that we can do that, right, we can, you know, somebody said, a selectman suggested we put something in the town book, uh, we can do it there, but I think that there are. Maybe a handful, there are two handfuls of reminders, things, topics, that could go out as a insert into a tax bill or a sewer bill. So when we outsource our tax bills, we have the option, if we wanna provide additional information in there, that all we need to do is submit them to PDF, it adds to the postage a little bit, processing fee and all that. Um, but we're thinking that what we could do is we could put like a nice fact sheet together. You know, for the things like, if you do sell your home, the abate, you need to notify, just.
Yeah.
There's a handful of topics related to selling your home, protection of taxes, sewer bills, protection of sewer bills, consumption periods. A lot of different things that I think, rather than have it in the simple notes, in the tax bill where you would see, like typically what we have is a little message about if you sell your home after April one. And you receive this bill, we only give one deal, so please forward this bill to the next, to whoever you sold it to, but, um. I think we can do a little bit better by putting an insert in the tax bill, sewer bills go out more than once a year, uh, and just make that routine.
Yeah.
So that way, you know, they see it, you know, they see that there's gonna be two, two pages with this one about, and we will have at least, I think, gone a long ways. With diligence and in trying to inform the people, you know, if you don't wanna lose your value, you know, those valuable, um. Exemptions, you know, this is what you gotta do, cause it's for us to chase those down at the town office.
That doesn't make sense.
It's, 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 it's a staffing thing, you know, it's, it's a resource thing for us, and there's not a lot of time to do that, um, there's no way of us knowing. When somebody is at the attorney's office buying a property or selling a property, that that's happening, we find out months later, uh, when we get those, that information from the registry of deeds. Uh, but I do think that, you know, maybe putting an insert, and that's, you know. I think that's gonna help them, but it's gonna help us on the call volume, when people have these, it's almost always the same questions, right? And it's not that there's a whole lot of it, uh, but those that do longer, lose their homestead exemptions, rely on those, uh, fixed incomes and those kinds of things. So, if we can provide information, I think that's a good way to do it.
And real estate agents, wanna find them also?
Uh.
Some are.
Some are.
Yeah, some do, some don't.
Yeah, some are.
That's it, you know, so working with a, an agent, they should know that, you know.
Mm-hmm.
What you see for taxes this year, you haven't seen it for a year, there's state laws on this.
Mm-hmm. Well, what's tricky is, so if. If somebody's buying a home, they typically wanna know what the tax bill is.
Right.
Well, here's the tax bill, right?
Right.
Most of the time, it includes a homestead exemption, so when the buyer gets it, the tax bill's six hundred bucks more, almost, it's like, well, that's not what I was told. It's gotta be a problem at the town office, right, so let's call there first, so we're oftentimes have, have customers that are super frustrated, um. Towards us, and it's not that we didn't necessarily get anything wrong, but it's that, you know, the process is just that way, you know, it, the responsibility is to. For the taxpayers to inform themselves, um, but you only fill out that homestead application one time, and after it's in the books. You never see it again, right?
Unless you sell it.
And so, um, I think we can do something with that, to help that out.
Can you look for some language we could look at? Sure.
Yeah, I think we, we're talking about, uh, putting together a fact sheet for several different topics, that's easily explained, and, um. And, uh, we could certainly put that before you guys. If you wanna add, you know, if you'd like to even know, you have a lot of experience here, showing you know what we're talking about.
Down the other end of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Came back to Article Five.
Like I said, as far as this is concerned, I think the town has satisfied, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It was not the town's responsibility to inform this type, this person, um. So, we don't have an obligation to approve this abatement. It's entirely up to you, but you're not, we're not gonna get the refund from the state of Maine if we do it.
Right.
Well, I'm gonna recommend that we don't.
We don't approve that emotion? I can make that in the form of a motion, that's a motion, second by Jason, or?
No, we shouldn't, we're not supposed to make negative motions, so I guess, I guess the better fact is, we just don't make a motion to approve and let it die as it is.
Okay.
And it's up to, I mean, doesn't matter really.
So, you, you want me to amend the motion to say that we will not approve, or I don't?
Well, there's no second, so. You just don't make a motion, just let it die.
So we just leave it alone. Okay. So by consensus, we're moving along and we're not taking action.
No action taken, yeah.
Everybody agree?
Okay.
It's awful, but.
I understand.
Very, very tough for people.
It is hard, yeah, utilize this like that.
Article Six, To Consider An Application Abatement For Property Taxes On Account Number Nine Five Six.
So this is a homestead application, a homestead, uh, an application for abatement, for a homestead that should have been applied, but the assessor did not apply, or we may be wrong. This one is, uh, on us.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept.
We will not get the reimbursement on it, but it's our mistake.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, or against, motion carries. Article Seven. To Consider Application For Abatement For Property Taxes For Accounts Number Sixteen Ninety-Two, Sixteen Ninety-Three, Sixteen Ninety-Four. Twenty-one oh seven, twenty-one oh eight, twenty-one twenty-one, twenty-one twenty, twenty-one twenty-three, twenty-one twenty-four. Three oh four nine, two one seventy-nine, twenty-one hundred, and one eighty-six, related to the tree growth tax exemption assessments.
So this was, uh. This is related to one owner.
Yep.
Several properties that were entered into tree growth, the assessor did not enter it, key it into the system.
Did that for last year's also?
This is, this is an abatement for, yes.
Last year's taxes.
Yes.
You have a total amount of all of them, uh, up to these.
Oh.
Ugh, god.
It's fine if you don't, I'm just, just curious.
I know, I know Carol had given me an email on that.
So I make, I make a motion to accept.
The amount, let me check.
I looked at all the individual ones, but I didn't add them in.
Let me see if I can find that.
And these all fall on us?
It's over six thousand dollars.
Yeah. But they're all submitted before April first.
Yes.
Of the previous year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I made the motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yep. So, so the assessor missed all of these?
Yes.
That's a lot.
Well, it was one application. So it was all, just a whole bunch of accounts, and he didn't get it in. So. There'll be some discussion on this further down the schedule.
Yeah, correct, okay.
Okay, good. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries.
Yep.
Article Eight, Update From Public Board Director On Winter Rose Maintenance.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I had asked Gary to put me on the identity agenda, I could talk to you guys about this year's winter maintenance, what's happening and the issues we're having. So that way that you're informed, so if anybody approaches you in town or anywhere, then you'll have an answer.
Right away and stuff like that, proactive instead of reactive. So first issue is, uh, as you noticed, we're having a lot of ice and rain versus snow, and that's raising havoc on our salt budget, our magnesium chloride and our sand budget. This year, I figured it out a little bit this morning, that night, and, uh, I'm about eleven thousand dollars more than last year. That's about three to four loads of salt more.
At this time?
At this time, and we've had less snow this year than last year. I'm hoping things even slow down a little bit and try and transfer to snow because. I think we're gonna be over by the end of the season. Cause we're probably, right now, I would say, close to half of our salt budget for the season. I think I figured out like forty-eight thousand dollars in right now, that's probably mixing our winter sand. Yeah.
And Kevin, you had talked to other, you've talked to M D O T in the town?
I talked to everybody precise north because south of that, it's not the same, it's raining and stuff, uh, I talked to Mark over the D O T. He said the last few storms, they doubled their salt also, I thought maybe it was something we were doing or not doing at the right time. And he said that, uh, they usually put down about forty, forty-five tons, and they put down seventy-five to eighty tons just the last storm. I contacted other D O T departments, and they said, uh, public works departments, and they said the same thing, that their. Salt and dirt has gone through the ceiling, some of the contractors that do private driveways and commercial parking lots. Have used more dirt this time, and this time this year than they did the whole season last year. So, I just, you know what I mean, it's not something that we are not doing right, or not, you know, overdoing, it's just that. The other day, we put, we had to put salt three, four times down because it kept freezing behind us a half hour, an hour. And they're announcing another one of these episodes Thursday. Also, the trucking that, the, you know, the contractor that holds our salt is having a hard time finding trucks and drivers to bring the salt up. And what used to take us a day to two days is now taking us three, four, five, six, seven days to get a load of salt. And the problem is, I can only put about four loads in our shed, because if, if we put too much, we can blow out the back wall, or it'll be out in the front, and it'll get wet, or it won't be good anymore, so. Second issue we're having is that we're having a hard time finding, hard time help. And then also, you know what I mean, that. We've put out an ad and people are just not, people don't wanna work anymore, it's, uh, it's sad, but. And it's fake, it's like that with everybody, and what we can offer, I had a few people that were interested, but what we can offer for pay. They don't even wanna get out of it for that, so. This year, we're probably not gonna be as proactive in picking up snow, we're gonna plow sand first, and then. Uh, a night or two after, or two, three nights after, we might pick up our snow, if we have the guys, and then another thing, it's the contractors that help us haul snow. Some of them are still working over at the bridge hauling dirt, so they're gonna go where bread and butter's, you know, pays more, and then come for us, and. Some of the other contractors are having a hard time to find workers to plow and help them out too, so. It's a triple effect that starts here, and it just keeps going downhill, and unfortunately, we wanted to last stop before it hits the water.
So what happens with snow rap, we call that the snow rap agreements, and you can't find, there's no, really no contractors interested in doing it anymore, because they can't find people that's. Interested to go drive trucks in the middle of the night for a snow removal project, and so, they're doing it more than house. But these guys, after they've been out around the clock plowing, need to rest.
Yeah.
You know, uh, before they can start picking up snow, so, you know, the snow gets left in the roads a little bit longer than the people might be used to. But, you know, the guys have to get a break in between the storm and the cleanup time too, so it's resulting in longer times between, uh, storms and the cleanup of those storms on, on Main Street, so. It's tough, uh, we wanted to bring an awareness, uh, to here, so you guys could, you know, if you're fielding any calls on, you know, you would have that information. Then also to talk, you know, you might have ideas about how we could address this in the future, but it's not an easy, uh. And Chris talked to me about sidewalks being glazed over, and, you know, it's the same thing there, it's, it's hard to keep up with ice, icing, it, it. When it ices up right behind you, um, but then, you know, sidewalks is a big job too, and sanding sidewalks and staffing, you know, resources. It's considerable.
And it's hard also because what happens, especially on the sidewalks, when you have vehicles that are parked, it's hard to go around them. And we don't wanna put dirt on the sidewalks, cause you're gonna track that into businesses, so we try to use that as least as possible. So sometimes, like, uh, you'll notice last week, we left the snow there, if I would have had it taken off right away, it would have been pure ice. But then when you get an inch of rain behind you, it melts back down anyway, it freezes over after, so. It's, uh.
It's a stupid winter.
It's gonna be an interesting winter, but like I said, I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, so if you're confronted.
Need it, sir.
I know we've gotten several calls on it, and we're doing the best we can, we have, like I told the people, we have nobody to help out, we have to do double jobs now, and. We have, you know, a shortage of our retirees that were helping us out, some of them are in their eighties now, and they're no longer with us, and you know. It's, it's, it's gonna get tough, and it's like that with everybody. So people will have to be patient with us, and we're doing the best we can. So.
Appreciate the help.
Be aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Article Nine, To Consider Request By Police Receiving Local Six Oh Eight To Reopen Article Fifteen Of The Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Three Contract. Amy? Before.
So, what we're seeing now is that, uh, we, we just ratified a contract that started in July, and, uh, what we're starting to see, at, at that time, we thought we were, we were market competitive, which we all agreed to. Uh, we negotiated with Doug and Gary, and I thought it was a successful contract, but now, the market is changing so rapidly that we're already falling behind. So, our contract says that we can open Article Fifteen, which is wages, uh, upon a hundred and twenty day written notice. So I submitted that notice, um, and all that really means is that I would like the opportunity to see what's going on around the county with the other agencies, see where they're at, and kinda compare. Um, their wages with where we're at, like, Van Buren, we can't compare with them in markets that no longer exist. Fort Kent has drastically increased their salaries. Um, I'm just starting to get some contracts in from other agencies right now, so. The first step that I do is I get everybody's contract, and I, I make a spreadsheet, and I put all the wages in, and I come up with an average figure, then I compare that average to where we're at. And then I come up with a proposal from there, and all we really want is a fair wage, you know, we don't want more, we don't want less, we just wanna. Uh, what's, an average of what's going on in our geographical area. Unfortunately, it's like, you have Kevin was saying, uh, in law enforcement, it's a nationwide problem, we're having staffing issues, nobody wants to come do this job. We have a vacancy that we're not able to fill right now, um, you know, there's a lot of stress that's, that's falling onto the guys that are working now, you know. I hate to see some guys burn out because they're working sixty, seventy, eighty hours a week. So, retention, it's about retention, and it's about attraction, you know, I'm trying to get guys to come here. As far as benefits though, I don't think we can ask for a better benefit package, I think we're all very happy with what we have for benefits. Uh, but it's those wages, and, um. Let's face it, guys that are twenty-two, twenty-three years old don't really care about benefits, they wanna see a dollar amount. So, uh, it's just not, we just, we're asking for an opportunity to, to just kinda look at everything, and if we need to reassess, then we have that hundred and twenty day written notice in place, to be able to go back and do that.
This, this year, we've lost five officers, uh, four of them has been because of, uh, money issues, they went to higher paying departments. Um, you know, you, we look at Fort Kent, who two months ago was talking about disbanding their police department because they couldn't find any officers. Um, they went with an increase in, in wages and benefits, and now they got a fully staffed department.
Right, and their actual wage is twenty-three, twenty-three dollars an hour, right?
Twenty-three seventy-six.
Yeah, twenty-three seven thousand. Well, that, and I think that's the, for twenty-one, I think twenty-two, eleven, twenty-four.
When you're comparing that at the bar, are you looking at the benefit package also?
I will be.
Okay.
I will be.
But you, but you haven't done that yet.
I haven't done that yet, no, that's, we, we, I submitted a letter to Gary, uh, just to put on notice that we were gonna be kinda doing some research. I haven't done any of that yet, but I figured now is a good time, seeing as we're getting into budget season.
Yeah.
So, uh, between now and July, you know, if we need to make adjustments, then we can do that. Um, I know other agencies are looking at, uh, longevity bonuses, uh, you know, along with, with pay increases. Or, there's a bunch of different things that are happening now that we hadn't seen before, and that's all to, to keep guys. Or there's a bunch of different things that are happening now that we hadn't seen before and that's all to, to keep guys.
Well, our town brewer police department is offering twenty thousand dollars signing bonus.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the police department to start collecting some information and bring us, uh, some proposals of what they feel. Do you second that?
I'll second that. I, I mean, I don't see any problem at all. I mean, whether we get competitive now or have to do it later when we're missing more people. I mean, I, I think at this point, it's fair to say that this is a problem everywhere and it's not just with the police, you know, departments everywhere. But it's a great time to start looking at it for sure.
And, and I think we can't forget about what's gonna happen in the future because Ross is a short timer. I'm not that, I'm not gonna be here that much longer either.
Geez.
We've got Dennis P. Carter who's in his fifties and I don't know how long he's gonna handle it for. Uh, so we gotta start tracking these young guys to come in here and work for the future. So whatever we do now is gonna affect what happens ten years from now.
Cause in your letter, you said it would only affect July fiscal year, new fiscal year, correct?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're on to our contract. And this year's budget, so we're not asking for any changes until, until July. And if we do all the research and it looks like we're market competitive, then so be it.
As we look.
I think, I, I think that we, didn't we already look at that though in, in this past summer?
We did.
We did.
I think so.
We did.
So, so what really has changed?
Salary is in bonuses.
Salary is in bonuses.
So, so where, you said you haven't done any research yet, so, so how do you know that?
Well, he's coming to ask us to go on it.
I understand, but I guess really the question is why, why are we looking at this now is the question.
Because we're, law enforcement is a community of guys that talk. And we've lost Garrett Alber, who's at Fort Kent. If you ask Garrett, why did you go to Fort Kent? Well, he, he lived there, which is a big thing and we understand that, but he also looked at his, his salary and his benefits package. Quite a bit better than what we had to offer. You know, uh, Dan Buren was offering pretty good salary and benefits package and they didn't get anybody to apply. And they ended up closing shop. And he said, like Ross said, while before, uh, Fort Kent, just a couple of months ago, was talking about closing their doors.
And, and is it because?
Because they couldn't hire, they couldn't.
I understand, but I mean, is it because that they have increased their salaries that they now are, are, are fully manned?
I believe so.
We're losing R R S to them for their salaries.
And then right now, the sheriff's office is, they have opened three guys in sheriff's office. I mean, guys dumb shit, you know, they go to that, that agency, they get a day home car, they got other, other things that are attractive to them.
I understand. You want requests so that you can do your research or if we don't have a request, why should I do the research?
Right.
I understand your point.
Yeah. So if you allow me to bring some facts to the table and discuss them, then. I'm gonna motion here or something.
You have a second too?
Yeah.
Second.
Yes.
So any more discussion? Yeah, so I actually discussed this a little bit with Gary the other day. One of the things that we had discussed and it's a topic for another day, but something to keep on top of our, our mouth. We're having issues everywhere. I mean, public works is having issues, departments are having issues. Maybe it's time we can review something. Uh, just an idea that popped into our head, but a yearly bonus for all full-time employees through the town. You know, something that they can take home at Christmas time that makes that, their position a little more attractive. Doesn't have to be anything huge, but just something that we can start looking into, so. I know we're all tight on money and budgets, but, you know, we, we also, we can't run a town without money, but we can't run a town without people sitting at the desk doing the job.
Yeah. I think that we, we spent, I don't know, half an hour kind of just talking about, uh, this and. It's kind of interesting. You see, almost see history repeating itself in terms of benefits packages and, and, and by lawyers. Where, you know, municipalities used to have, you know, generous longevity packages and bonuses and, you know, accrual of. You know, vacation time and being able to cash that out and, and that, not just here in Manawaska, but that, you know, went away, you know, over the years. It was very unpopular and costly to the towns. And then all of a sudden now that we're seeing that's starting to become a talking point again, just by reading the newspaper and you can see. What employers, especially, you know, law enforcement are offering these huge bonuses, sign-on bonuses. And you're hearing, we're hearing some of the care facilities in town are offering.
Yes.
Uh, sign-on bonuses and.
Some businesses are offering fifteen, twenty thousand, both sign-on bonuses.
I think of that.
No, no.
It just, I don't think the problem's gonna go away tomorrow, but.
So we're always careful to talk about, uh, consider the, you know, taxpayers and, and, you know, not overtly burning them as well, but then. If we're not able to buy the services because we don't have staff, because we, we aren't proactive enough. And then all of a sudden, there's no services to be paid, you know, there's a delay in services or a big interruption. That's not convenient either to the taxpayers. And so striking the right balance, uh, is, is key, uh, you know, cost and services rate, so.
It's a mention and now it's swing towards labor. I think we're all facing, uh, you know, tasting inflation right now.
Yeah.
It stings, you know, what you were making six months ago, you've lost ten, fifteen percent of it now, you know? Your manpower and, and so I understand that.
Yeah, you could look at the bigger picture too. If we can't get enough guys to drive trucks and public work, the snow stays on the side of the road for a week. You're affecting businesses. I'm not going out there snowing the sidewalk. It's not their fault. You know, if we can't afford to keep cops in town and we, and they're not there to provide you the service when you need them. We're only hurting the taxpayers and local businesses by not finding a way to get more people to come work for our town.
There's something that's important too with these, uh, these sign-on bonuses that other agencies are putting out there. These sign-on bonuses are not for young guys that have zero experience, that haven't been to the academy. They're trying to get guys. That have been here for a while and has some experience and just come in laterally transfer.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what scares you with us is that we don't, we have a lot of money invested in some of our officers with training and everything else and we don't want them to leave.
Right.
Um, you know, we took a big hit with, with Garrett leaving. Garrett was, was a pretty big part of our department. And with him leaving and going up the road, um, kind of made a step back and hold town.
Yeah.
Go on.
That's all I got.
Any more discussion?
Hold on a sec.
Carry on. Those in favor of the motion? Who's against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Article ten is to consider requests by the town and act to create a board or a board subcommittee to meet with the administration and departments to assess staffing concerns, which falls pretty much with the first I knew when you discussed.
Yeah, yeah. You know, um. It's always good to take a look at our departments and see where we are at, you know, and, um. Ideally, we should be proactive in doing that. Oftentimes, we're more reactive and then. The situation arises and it causes us to say, you know, we need to take a look at things. And I think right now, we're. Kind of trying to be proactive, but we're not, we're reacting right now to market conditions. And so what's going on with labor? Um, we have staff, we have departments, uh, that provide a lot of services, um, various departments. Um, their wages are, are rising at levels. And, and it's, you know, you can drive down the road and you see it on, on billboards, you know, sixteen dollars an hour that work. Um, without any qualifications. And so, you know, you start looking at your departments and where we're at. You know, I, I'm worried that we lose employees, uh, because the employees that we have are highly trained. In their, in their respective departments. Uh, take for example, the clerks out front, the amount of training and the amount of services that they provide. For the various things that they have to be to provide. It takes a couple of years to get your feet underneath you. And, you know, I hate to be in a situation where we're turning over employees. So, uh, we have employees, we have departments that have shed. The number of positions over the years. Um, and they're hurting and we have other departments that might be just right where they, perfect where they are. Um, but I think what I'd like to do is see if we can get a couple of board members, uh, pointed to a subcommittee to meet with administration. And departments one-on-one, department heads, just to have a conversation. Okay, what's, what's going on with your department? Uh, we wanna hear what are the concerns, what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses? Uh, what would you, what are the wishes, what are the wants, what are the needs, whatever? So we could compile that report and bring it back to this board ahead of our budget process. Uh, so that if there are any adjustments that can be made, that need to be made, we can be, have be informed. Of those decisions that need to be made and not just, you know, make assumptions. So we wanna be, we wanna bring facts, uh, to this board.
Totally makes sense.
Yeah, no, I'd be interested in serving on board like that. I mean, it'd be helpful.
I would be willing to serve on the board too.
Doesn't matter to me, I'll.
Well, I make a motion to accept the request by the town manager to, uh, put together a.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
Just need to.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
I'll volunteer.
Yeah.
If you do it early today, I'm available. My day's off.
Okay.
So you would organize the, the, the meeting with the, with the department heads? Is that, or do we just do our own and go meet with them?
No, we're, we're gonna sit down together and we do it right here.
Yeah, yeah, so that's perfect and yeah.
And, uh, we'll, we'll bring each department director, we'll bring all the information that we think is relevant.
Yep.
We can, you know, I'll bring information and if you have any thoughts that you wanna bring to the, to the discussion. You know, you can come in with note, with your notepad and we'll sit there and we'll, we'll talk. And we'll scribble and we'll go back and forth and we might, it, it might take a couple of meetings per department head meeting. Sometimes it might just be one.
Yeah.
Uh, but at the end of it all, we'll sit down and we'll compile, uh. You know, fact sheet for each department and then we'll put that into a report that we'll present to the full board. Uh, not too late in January, well, coming, but.
Yeah.
By the end of January, I'd like to see if we can get that down because we're gonna start our budget process here pretty soon.
I'd like to see who's eligible for retirement between five years.
Say that again?
I'd like to see who's eligible for retirement, each, each department in five years.
I don't know how you wanna figure it out.
Identify who's gonna be part of that committee.
I can carry, yeah.
Yeah, whatever. Can I be alternated too?
Kinda hard because if you're meeting with different department heads, you're meeting, it'd be better.
Well, maybe you get some, three to, if we all wanna do something, three departments could be one.
I think that if you, if you wanna, to me, it's totally fine. If you wanna, wanna mix it up and a couple of you tackle a couple of departments and a couple of, that's okay.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. Some, some of you might have better, stronger strengths in one versus the other, you know?
That works, yeah.
And so that works too. I guess you don't wanna.
And I think it would also give us all a, a little bit of insight, maybe not each department, but at least one of those departments.
No, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it's necessary that you, you identify that here. We can, I can reach out to you and say.
I think so.
What would you like to mean?
Why don't we leave it up to you?
Yeah.
Give us an option and we'll, I don't think it'll be an issue no matter what.
Then we can put a special board meeting together that we just, you know, discuss just that. We all get together, discuss our departments that we talk to and.
Right.
Get on the same page, yeah.
Good idea.
Okay.
Motion second. Oh, any more discussion?
Those in favor of the motion? Against, motion carries. Ross had something to say. Did you raise your hand?
No, people have raised their hands.
It's like the third time you mentioned that tonight, Ross.
Next article is updates from the town manager on various projects. I asked Garrett to bring up the board to, to see what's going on.
Yeah, so in my manager's report is that I don't get out. Two to often, but occasionally I, I'm prompted I do. Um, you know, I'll give you a little update on Kmart, uh, plaza revitalization. Um, the request for proposals for building demolition will be in tomorrow's paper of the St. John Valley. Uh, and also by direct mailing to contractors that we sent out today, directly by Wood and Current. Bid submission is January sixth at one P M. Contract period after we sign as a hundred and twenty day substantial completion. Um, there's gonna be some site survey work that needs to be done, a boundary survey, uh, and also carve out, uh, work for the, what Fish River Road Health will eventually own. Um, we anticipate, you know, demo to begin late January, sometimes in February. Um, and then Fish River's architects and our engineers have finalized a site footprint. Um, I wanted to give you an insert on that and I, and I forgot, but I can send it to you by, by email. Of where it's going to be situated. Uh, I think I've mentioned before that it's, it's been kind of moving around because of the slope and, you know, trying to design a building. Uh, that's not, the first floor is in multi-level, you know, so, um, we're, we're getting there. Um. It's, it's, we meet weekly. We have a project meeting every Monday and Monday afternoon usually to make sure that we stay. You know, we keep making progress and we report back to each other. Um, still working on the reciprocal access agreement with, uh, owners of the Kmart building. Um, I have a meeting with the attorney tomorrow, the Z N, uh, for a draft, to review a draft agreement. Uh, on that that we're gonna present to Seritage, uh, for their consideration. Um, so things are moving along. The, the E D A grant application was sent as a preview to the program director, Alan Brigham. Um, and he's provided comments, uh, back and forth with Bob Clark at M and D C who's worked to put the grant application together. So the way that kind of works is, you know, they give you an opportunity to, you show us what you got, we'll have some discussion. We think you should tweak your application this way and that way. Alan brings his, all applications to his board. There's a panel that review these applications. Somewhere in Philadelphia, I believe. Uh, but usually once Alan, uh, feels comfortable with it, it's likely gonna get funded. So it gives you an opportunity to make it. An application that's, you know, worthy. So, um. I got comments from Bob today that it was a couple of things they'd really like to see clarified in the application. They're gonna make some tweaks. And, uh, I'm, I'm guessing that the application will probably be submitted here before the end of the year. And that, that will be reviewed by the panel. Sometimes in mid or late January. So we should have some idea as to where, uh, when we're gonna get proof or funding. Um, I'm gonna skip a little bit and I'll talk about the, um, workbook, uh, system that was implemented. Our twenty twenty-one audit, I talked to Carol about it and, um, we're thinking, we're being told that the draft audit should be ready in January. So that's coming along. Uh, they're super busy and, uh, I know that we have to tie our audit in with the schools. Cause their department of the town passed through their funds. And so up there too, there's, you know. We can't get ours done until theirs is also done. And likewise, the other way. So we have to work together, um, to get that done. Uh, we're hoping that we're gonna see a draft in January for last year's audit, for the audit for. The fiscal year ending June thirty last year. Um, our building facades program or C D G program, um, that program is. You know, we were awarded that grant in twenty nineteen. It's a hundred thousand dollar grant to help businesses with, uh, improve their facades. In that area of the schoolwork area that was outlined. Um, COVID came along, put the brakes on that, obviously because we weren't gonna put anything out to bid. And ask, you know, participants to come up with their one-to-one match when they were closed for business, right? So we delayed the project because of COVID and now what we're seeing is, um, you know. We just can't get contractors to bid on these projects. So we went out to bid, didn't receive one single bid. Uh, we have one project that was, that was being completed, that's Oasis. Uh, but that was a self. You know, the carpenter did his own work, you know, it was his business, his property. And so his, you know, that was part of his application. But there are others that, you know, can't do it for themselves and, uh, we didn't receive any bids. So we have authorization to. You know, direct negotiate now. Um, since we've met our, our requirements of soliciting bid for bids. Um, and so we're trying to, you know, beg carpenters and contractors who can do the work, to come do the work. And it's not simple work. It's Davis Bacon wages because it's federal and there's red tape and it's small projects and, you know. Most, most carpenters or contractors really, if they're gonna choose the work that they want, they're not gonna choose that kind of work.
Cause they gain.
Yeah. And so we are trying, we're kicking, we're knocking, we're, we're, we're talking to carpenters and, um. You know, ideally, I think, you know, these, the state's gonna work with us beyond the contract periods, uh, to, to get the work done, you know? So they're not gonna hold us to, because we have a contract period with the grant, uh, but they'll, this is not just an issue for Manawaska, this is.
We had six referrals.
We had six applicants, yes. Yeah. So.
And one is complete?
And one is complete. Now there, depending on bids, there may be some additional funds left in the program, but it all depends on what the bids come back at. And if there are, if, if there is additional funds, we could probably do another advertisement. But for those of you who were here at the time. But for those of you who were here at the time, uh, we went, you know, we did direct mailing, we door-to-door, we phone call. I mean, I, we covered, we canvassed the area to make sure that we had, and all we came muster was six people who were really interested in the program. So, uh, that's not to say today, it might be a different story, but we'll see. Uh, and the last thing I have is, um, you know, we kind of talked about uh, the assessing work and, you know, things not getting put into the tax commitment resulting in abatement applications and stuff, so it's been uh, um, you know, we, we went from having an assessing agent to, with Annance's retirement and so we, we decided we were going to do an in-house assessor. We hired somebody to do C D, to do community development and assessing. That person left and uh, the county of Rusak had a um, program to do regional assessing. And so we, we're thankful we got that. Um, they, you know, they took on a lot of work uh, really quick for us and we're thankful for that too. Uh, but there are times that they just can't get to all the work as quick as it, it needs to be. And so what you. You know, it's frustrating to bring abatements before this board, and I bless Carol and I, and hate to do it. You know, because sometimes it's, it's a building error, it's on our end. Uh, we didn't get things entered the way we should have, you know, by one person's fault or another. Uh, and that's on us, so I feel that.
There's also the building permits that increased dramatically.
Yeah, and there's a lot more building permits now, not only changed the uh.
Oh, yeah. We went fifteen thousand to one thousand.
So I think, you know, Manon, I, I know this, but I'm sure she does, there's a lot of moving parts in, in municipal government, especially when it comes to items that are related to property, real estate and personal property taxes and all of the different things that can affect that, those accounts. And we have an accounting system, we, we use, it's called Trio. And it does all of our transactions and our cash transaction, the accounts are there, but it doesn't provide you an easy, good report or summary or tracking of work that's in progress or place where you can actually go to and quickly see things. And so with this year, with the challenges of getting all the assessing work done, we wait this year, right? Um, I just felt that we needed to try to see if we could come up with something to try to keep things more visibly in front of us, the work that we need to do, the work that the assessing department needs to do. Uh, because there's a lot of data inputs that come in. It's either anything from deaths and exemption, how that affects exemptions, to assessing lot splits, transfers, abatements. So, you know, spend some time kind of coming, working with staff to try to come up with something that we could um, have as a shared work, workbook. So everybody in this building has, has live access to what is uh, going to be a, a place where when we get uh, sort of like a property assessment inquiry, somebody says, hey, I just think I'm paying too much for taxes, can the assessor take a look at that? And we'll log it in, so when we get that inquiry, historically what we've done, we just put it on a piece of paper and we put it in the folder. Right, and so, you know, we wait for the assessor to get that, that job then. Well, you know, that requires the assessor to come to town and take a look at it and say, all right, I'm going to make these calls. Um, I have no way of easily knowing other, if I'm going back behind everybody's work to see how that work is getting done. Um, I, I don't, I'm not a micromanager, I don't like to look over people's shoulders. Uh, everybody's competent in what they can do. Um, but we felt that it would be helpful um, if we could get everybody on the same page. We all have a little bit, a little role to play in, in respect to the data that affects property tax accounts. You know, like Natalie has to provide deaths and we get homestead applications or we get veterans applications and where do those go? So, uh, and how are they handled and how are they logged in? So what we've done is we put together uh, like sort of a tracking system, but it's an archive really, like we can go back easily. It's just a simple Excel worksheet, uh, it's shared, so as these changes are made, everybody can see them in real time. Um, and for instance, all of the uh, assessment review requests come in, we log them in from who it is, to the account number, to the nature of the inquiry. Uh, you can see what's entered by clerks, you can see the role that the assessor plays in that. And, and then we sign off whoever did the entry and whoever finalized it. And all of the different things that have to happen to finalize that transaction from the day we took it to the day that it's done. So we have that from property assessment inquiries to abatement requests, to supplemental bills. Um, property transfers. Uh, Richard, the chair had talked to me a while back. He had mentioned back in his earlier tenure that uh, he used to get, the board used to get a report of all the property, like I don't know if it was quarterly or semi-annual, but they would get a report of all of the transfers of property in the town. And it was sort of an informative thing.
You remember that?
Yeah, I do. And I said, I've never seen that, you, you know. It's not familiar to me and I'm, obviously they've been doing it, so uh, we didn't really have anything other than a binder of transfers, right? Because that's what we do, we put all the transfers into a binder and some, now we scan them. Um, but it's not a quick reference, right? So right now, you know, we'll have all our transfers uh, logged in, when we receive them and when they get processed by the assessor. Um, lot splits, it's another kind of transfer when, you know, the lots are, are carved out. Um, A L Y forms are those returns that, for personal property that the assessor needs to do. Um, we're, we're going to get those, we're going to log them in, but the assessor needs to sign off on those. Building permits, there's a lot. Denise, uh, and I spent some time and she did some research on funding software where she could have searchable database for building permits. Um, they're costly, they don't always, uh, you want to have them potentially be able to merge with Trio. A lot of them don't. Trio has a personal, uh, building permit module. Nobody in the municipal world likes it, they don't use it, it doesn't work well. So this is just a simple way to track building permits. It puts all this information in front of Lewis, the assessor, who's, can see this in Presto out from his office. So on any given day, uh, he can open his computer and he can say, what's going on in Madawaska? All his work that he needs to do is right here, it's right, it's right there on that workbook. Um, and we can see it getting done as he's doing it. Um. What else do I got? Uh, personal property taxes, uh, applications that we get, the Betty and the Better forms, just seven oh six declarations and all that, all that stuff. Deaths. Uh, homestead applications. Uh, we have, we have a roster for a homestead, active homesteads in there. Veterans applications, active veterans exemptions roster, tree growth, applications, tree growth roster. Um, what else? I'm not going to look at that last one because there's some personal information, but we, uh, when there are bankruptcy notices, for instance, those come in, we have to stop the lien clock. Can't send out liens anymore while those are in foreclosure, while, you know, and if we don't do our job and a lien goes out, we, we're going to get a nasty call about it. So just a lot of different things and I think that it'll go a long ways. Right now, we're just dealing with the backlog of putting all this, this year's information in there. We're not going to go beyond in the back years, we're just going to start with this year moving forward. But it'll be a nice quick place to go take a look if you want to see, you know, quickly find a building permit or find out about a transfer or, you know, just, it'll be really easy for, for anybody to go back and use. Um, important for that purpose, but also staff changes, people come and go. And when things are just logged in, put into folders, it's hard to find for somebody who's walking in the door. So this will be a good place to kind of have a quick reference, there's still going to be folders and things like that, but.
But now there's a tracking mechanism.
But now that's a tracking mechanism and it's not necessarily meant to be a tracking mechanism. I think it'll serve more to be a good archive and, and just to put work into the queue, right? And, and, and see how it's, you know, and track it.
Yeah.
But, you know. So. I mean, just to see how it works. It's easily changed and modified, so as we go, um, it's already changed since we started it and some of the staff said, hey, could you add a column here or change that there? Um, we can do it, it's, it's ours, it's just, it's simple Excel, so. Anyway.
So how are you going to divide the, the, the work that needs to be done or the entries that need to be put in here? I mean, you're dividing that between your employees or, I mean, I assume the assessor will do his entries, but.
So for instance, like everything that you see, each tab has a color and it tells us what the roles are. So, you know, admin finance office, this is what we do. And the tabs relate to the tab colors that we have to do the work. And of course, the assessor has a rulebook to do in almost every tab.
Yeah.
Um, but it tells us what we need to do. Uh, and one of the other things that we're going to do is we have sort of a place for, we're going to put like reference notes, especially for the clerks, so they get a lot of calls. Why is this like this and why did I lose my homestead? You know, it's, homestead exemption sounds fairly simple, but when somebody takes their property and they convey it to one of their kids, the kind of, the kind of estate that they put it into or the trust could result in them losing your exemption.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to explain. Uh, if it's a revocable trust, the exemption can stay on, but if it's an irrevocable trust, they lose the exemption and people call in, why did I lose my exemption? So we're going to put, much like we're going to put a, a, a page of facts in the, in our, of inserts into our bills. We're going to have something similar here for staff to quickly look at and say, all right, you know, these are, somebody has an inquiry and it's a tough, I don't know that off the top of my head. Click, click on the tab, the information will be in there and there'll be stuff like, you know, lien notices go out on this date, foreclosures happen on this date. Anything that's helpful. It's almost always the same calls, the, the concerns. You know, we can easily put stuff in there to be helpful for everybody and we're all reading from the same page and, and providing the same answer to our clients. Any questions?
I thought it was important to share that with the board.
Uh, very good.
Well, you know, I wasn't going to, Richard came in and, you know, talking about setting up the agenda and, uh, with the chair and looking at all those abatements and it's like, like, and I said, well, I'm working on a solution, you know, and so he's like, well, show this to the board. I showed him the, he's like, show it to the board, they'd like to see that, so that's why we did it.
So, so this should relieve some of the work for the assessor then, that, that.
Well, I mean, he still has his work to do.
It's a better verification.
It still has his work to do. Uh, I think the issue is like when he comes here, um, everybody needs him for something. So we all scramble and said, Lewis, I got this and I got this and I got this and, and everybody from each corner of the office is coming in with a little bit of something that he needs done and he just gets inundated. Uh, it's coming from all directions and so what we're trying to do is centralize it. So when he comes here, he can actually take a look and he can do it from away and say, okay, this is what I'm, it's, it's all there. Of course, he still has to pull the folders and we set up a, an organization of that uh, for work pending and work completed. And we're not going to ask him to file things and stuff, we're just saying, when you're done with this work, take it from this folder and move it to this folder and we'll take it from there.
I mean, we've had changes in board, in board, in the court enforcement. We have a lot of changes that have impacted why there's, you know, a backlog or whatever, you know. Our, our building permits changed, I mean, now it's a thousand dollars, you need a permit and and tree growth, I talked to foresters, you know, most people now, they're, the guys who are cutting wood are advertising, hey, you can cut your wood and then put in tree growth and save some taxes. And they see that as a benefit. We saw a swamp of that in the last two years. So.
But I think what's, will be super helpful is to be able, the ability to be able to go back and just click on it, on a, that spreadsheet archive and, and find stuff quickly. You can just, you can search it, you know, you can alphabeticalize it, you can extract it for other purposes. So.
So you're creating the spreadsheet?
It's done.
That's it?
You're saying you did that, you had the ability to do that?
It took, it took a long. I, I, I did some YouTube videos, tutorials.
Very good, very good, very good.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Like to thank everybody for the year and Merry Christmas and wishing New York a good new year.
Happy new year.
Okay.
Same here.
Same here with the board.
I make a motion, Richard? You want to?
I made it. Tell yours, tell yours. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? You, Richard.
Just do it.
Thank you.
An hour. Very good.